Ah, okay.
Hey, Bill.
Hello.
Yes, how have you been?
Okay, we're trying to get this stupid thing to work.
Yeah, I'm just ready to type it in. I just don't want to get ahead of myself.
Yeah, I'm playing your L.
They both my agenda.
Hey, how are you Jay?
Okay, staying out of trouble when we're asking too much.
Recording.
I don't know if that noise was me, but this is Doug.
And I think you need to meet your iPad. And then unmute the town council.
Okay.
It's not any better.
It's a little bit better.
I don't know if you even need that, right? I've got everything signed here.
Because whatever it picks up is going to come through this, you'd have to turn down the speaker. Mr. Can you hear us?
Yep, that's much better.
Yes. I don't hear that loud sound anymore.
All right, yeah.
Do it, do it, do it.
Wow.
That's it.
With Bill's help, I think.
Yeah, it's this. And with these yours, these are your notes right that had the passcode. How do we know? What? I don't know, but.
Yeah, something. All right, it's seven oh four. Call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call. Doctor, you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, good, thanks. Missy is here. No, it's here. My last.
Hi there.
Ken is here. Jay is here. And we have Rebecca. On and Corey. And I think. That's it. Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay.
It's just one of our voices. Back of your head.
What?
It's the back of your head in my face. Surprise, this camera is broken.
High tech stuff is always a mystery, right? How many?
Doug.
Jen. They, Bill. Missy and Doug.
So we don't need.
So we've got five regular here, so we don't have to appoint you or anyone else. All right, next item is the review approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any comments, corrections?
I looked at them whole, but I didn't make that to bring them to. Enter the dogs.
Hearing none. Someone would make a motion.
I make motion, we accept the minutes.
Except that Jay makes a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wasn't here, so.
All right, all in favor of accepting, say hi.
Hi.
Oppose. Oppose. Hearing, hearing no opposition, the minutes are accepted unanimously. Uh, fiscal report, not much different from the last meeting. I know at the Lester House, there are some things I'm going that will rack up some charges, but it's got thirty percent of the budget remaining. Uh, the sawmill, about eighty-five percent left, fifty-eight, one hundred and thirty-seven, I think. Been a couple. Couple of small things that have gone, gone through there. And in miscellaneous, there's still seven hundred dollars, which is four or five hundred for the school, and then there's still, I think, a couple hundred bucks in there for signs. Uh, we've got a two hundred dollar purchase order out on that. And they, um, the snow weddings, I'm sorry, the capital accounts are the same. About seventy-five hundred for the Lester House and twenty-five thousand for the, for the mill. Uh, I don't think uh, with the new, new budget until, until that's, I guess, passed by the town or accepted, we're not going to see any, any additional funds from that. All right. Okay, committee reports, Bill?
Yeah, I've got a few things. It's, uh, one is good to be back. Um, so thank you, or I guess Alan covered for me last week and in the minutes had a substantial update, so. Um, Missy, I'd want to share a few things that, that are, that are maybe the most important to us right now would be the RFP that we're processing for the structural assessment. So then Alan and I met with what we thought were going to be three vendors on April fourth. Turned out one of them wasn't, not able to attend a medical emergency in the family and, and I haven't heard from her. So this is Marie Ennis. I don't think they will be submitting a bid. So I told her if she was interested, we'd meet again, but I haven't heard back and knowing it was a, you know, a family and her husband's.
So, so what should we? Just go with two or?
Well, that's what we'll do. We will get this.
Go with the two.
Yeah, and then we'll share that back. We asked for three, one chose not to bid. We're invited. So we conducted the, the walkthrough on the fourth of April. Uh, the responses are due back on the fifth of May. The deadline for questions was the fifteenth. I hadn't received any, but I did get one today and we'll respond to it. So it's a late question, but we will certainly respond. It's a pretty simple. I don't have any problem doing that. And we're targeting a selection on the twentieth of May. Um, the funds are without extension available through the end of August, I believe. And we're targeting to have the assessment complete by the end of the July. Uh, we think that two months, two and a half months ought to be enough for, for them to do the assessment. We could extend. The state has told us that if it was progressing and we need a little more time, that would be fine. Um, so I'm not worried about an extension, but I don't think we'll need it. Um, so I think we're in pretty good shape on the, the structural assessment. I was supposed to have on a separate topic, the ongoing security system discussion. Um, since I was last here, I did reach out to Rue Protective Services. Um, and he shared two bits of information that aren't necessarily encouraging. The first is the cost of the cable, the wire that would be needed has not gone down. It's only gone up since the last time, so. Um, and it was going to be a substantial installation fee. I also asked him about, you know, doing it with, you know, lesser cable. Um, and he said, no, I, I wouldn't recommend it and I wouldn't do it.
For this particular.
For this particular environment, he said, look, I, he says, I don't, you know, we've been in business for a long time that we would, we would only do it this way. We'd understand, he certainly would understand if we chose somebody else. Um, I have been in discussion with Ron from, that you had shared two months ago. Uh, and we were supposed to meet today. Um, he hurt his back over the weekend. I think as many of us can understand what that's like, so we weren't able to meet. Installation costs over the phone somewhere in the thousand dollar range as opposed to four or five, so. Um, and what he did say, and this was a discussion we had the last meeting I was at, whether we would have wireless. He doesn't believe he would use wireless, um, for a couple reasons. One, you gotta replace batteries. And so you're gonna have all these sensors and different, you know, cameras outside. He said, I probably wouldn't use batteries. But he wouldn't use the armored cable that Rue Protective Services would do. He would just use basically a phone line sort of um, installation, which can be.
Relative.
It's not intrusive. You wouldn't even.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be, yeah.
I mean, so I'm, I'm not overly concerned with that. He did say that it comes with an interesting feature. Um, it would come with a panel that everyone who has a key would have a code. So we have one key, you know, we have many copies. So of course, um, some people are there more often than others. But then if you were to go, you would go in and when you went in, you'd enter your key. We know exactly who.
I have my own.
You would have your own code. That's right.
You have your own.
Everybody would have their own. And I think.
Is there a record then?
Yep, it keeps a log. I'm sure it's on the internet, all of that sort of thing. The only thing I'm concerned about, um, and we'll just have to wait and see, is, you know, how many false alarms might go off? Right? And, you know, who's going to get called when these things go on? But I think given the cost and Ron seems like a heck of a guy, and I think you knew that, really, you know, responsive.
I think he knows his stuff.
Yeah, and you know, I, you know, I've thought more about it. Initially, we went a route we did because we were, we wanted to go to a place that had done historic properties. Rue does all of Mystic Village, or excuse me, the Seaport, rather. Those aren't barn-like facilities. Those are buildings, right? And there's, and, and I think you would, you know, if someone put in a wire in the wrong spot and we didn't like the looks of it, we move it. What's the worst case? There's some staples that are in the wood. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned maybe as I initially thought, because it's a barn. Right? I mean, you know, so.
Much the fact that it's small wire rather than a.
Yeah, I mean, because that armored kit, we have a lot of it now for the electric.
I know.
And it looks like crap, especially on the, you know, where the lean tubes.
Like, seeing it, yeah.
Um, so we'll see. Again, I was hopeful to have like an actual quote today. We had arranged it a week or so ago. Today was the day that worked and unfortunately he wasn't able to.
One thing on the, uh, uh, false alarms, we could check. He's got, he's got a system in the kitchen. The pantry, the food pantry that they just, they put in recently. I mean, who's ever in charge of that? We could just check with them to see how, how, you know.
Yeah.
Are they down there every day with false alarms or?
I guess the difference is we're, you know, that's a building that if you're there, you're there for. I mean, not a lot of people are going to that building where the food pantry is other than going in and they're going in normally today. You know, we've got, we know there are teenagers that are around. I, we'll just have to see. But right now, we don't know how much activity is there, because.
No, we don't.
Right? And so this will be, I don't know. It'll be insightful, so we'll see. We could do all sorts of things. We could put spotlights that come on on the motion detection and I, we'll see. The cost is low enough. I mean, the Rue installation, we were talking four to six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so, and I, as the more I've thought about it, we initially had talked about the sawmill and the blacksmith shop. I don't know that we really need the blacksmith shop. Maybe we could always do it later.
Yeah.
Start with the, what's important. And if we decide it, it's working well, you know, it's doing what we want. It's not creating any problems, then we could expand it to do the blacksmith shop if we thought that was. Um, so that's the security system is the second item. The third is some information Alan has shared around some repairs that we have planned for the, you know, provided the security system may be cheap enough that we can afford this, um, but, um, three items. One is the turbine gate where we had our diver volunteer repair last year. Uh, we think that's in the order of seven hundred to a thousand dollars to fabricate one with the right dimensions with the, you know, the appropriate connection. Um, there's also some interest in repairing the pond headgate. Um, we've done a lot of work go, go that over the years. Um, it, it's the, it's the wood that, that's there. And I think Alan thinks that's in the two hundred to four hundred dollar range.
Not much, yeah.
Not much. And then Missy, there was another item. I think there's been some discussion Alan had suggested, um, replacing the sign. Um, I don't know if, if you've had any conversation on that. Not really sure what that might be or how big we would want it, but that was another, you know, thought that if the budget permitted.
It's not, it's not in good shape or?
I don't recall whether it was a replacement or, because there is one there now.
Yeah.
I'm not.
I think, yeah.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So Alan and I did have a brief conversation, I think it was last week, um, about the possibility of doing two different signs. So obviously replacing the sign that's on the building itself, um, which I did have a conversation with Lance and, and Doug, and we could probably talk about that a little bit where we get to the, the sign, um, sign subcommittee. Um, but the other thing is doing a larger sign similar to, um, I don't know how many are familiar with the sign that's down by, um, the Yale House by the Ferry Landing in Gales Ferry, but something similar to that. The problem is right now is that we don't really have a vendor to produce those signs. So that's from a cost perspective, I don't know how much that would cost. Um, it's something we would have to investigate.
That would, that would give a little bit of, uh, background history.
Yeah.
With, with, with the mill for.
Right.
Right. So what we had talked about is potentially doing half the sign with a little bit of historic information about it, and then at the bottom of the sign have it, having the operational hours um, for both your spring and your fall sessions.
That would be, that would be.
Be nice. So we'll, we'll see. I mean, we'll see what, you know, come, we've got a lot, you know, a number of options.
You got a whole bunch of things.
Well, you're, hey, we're trying to tell much money, right? We'll see. Um, and then just to, in the interest of time, there's two other items I wanted to share just for awareness. Um, Alan received, he was contacted by a family member of a property that the owner had passed away recently. And they have a turbine there and it's a mill turbine of sorts. Um, and so there'll be some discussions now to find out, is that something that we could bring to the mill? As a, you know, the turbines there, but nobody can see it. We have a little model, we have pictures, but this could be a display. It's not the exact turbine, but it's a turbine. Um, and it, and then even said, you know what? The one we have might break. This might be a backup plan, right?
That, that to me is the, the key. If, if it's suitable.
Right. I don't know the size of it, that, you know, is it, is it powerful enough? Would it fit? But in any event, I think there's, there's some possibility. I don't know there's a place in the mill right now to put it, that we might have to make a decision on something would go, but, um, we'll find out more whether we have. Um, the property was, the property owner was, um, and if some may know the name, Jesse Randall Wilcox. Um, I think he passed away earlier this year. Um, and it's, I think it's his daughter or niece. Um, his niece, uh, is the executor of the estate. So Alan's in contact with her, um, to find out, is it something we can look at or see that?
Are you gonna take a look at it at some point?
That's what we hope, but, um, I'm going to talk to Alan a little more.
Yeah, because he talked to me and I, I said, wondered if I would like to see, and I would be curious to see what it actually looks like.
That kind of is how big it is, right? You know.
How, how, yeah, how big is, what kind of a job is it to move this, uh, this thing, you know? So I think he said that, I, I said I'm available Thursday of this week. So I said, we, we can take a, take a run up, up there. You're probably work.
Yeah, of course. It wouldn't work for me, but, but in any event, I, I know Alan will, he'll learn more about this.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's worth getting, I'm sure we will.
Yeah, it's, um, it's definitely worth, worth showing if, uh, it's something that could benefit us down, downstream. These don't come along very, very often, and there's provenance for this.
It's.
Because it's, it's a ledger. It's from a ledger mill, you know.
Which is incredible.
So.
And then I would say the last thing is that Mill is up and running. They've been going the last several Saturdays. They have some visitors coming in this weekend um, for a, a mill that if you remember, we had Amy Boyce who had asked for us to participate into saw some wood for her for a pretty substantial project.
Yeah.
We said we, it was probably more than we could do. We could give some, some lumber to intermix. Um, but she's doing some repairs on this mill. Some individuals from are, are coming down this Saturday, so. Um, it's, it's nice to know that, you know, we are a destination for many. And now the last thing I would say is those who, one of the individuals who came out for the renovations, um, an engineer that one of the bidders had, had just loved it. I mean, they were just, they're like.
She, I, yeah, she, she was.
And we could hire her. She would have been a good.
She was. She was into it. She really, she really, really was, which was very nice to, nice to see.
Yeah.
But you got, you guys did it, did a, a really great job of showing off the facility and the problems, some of the problems that we know about. Hopeful, so I think that at least she is, and that sounds like Roxanne too, are motivated to give us a good proposal.
Yeah, I think.
This is what, what we're hoping.
I think anyone would want to because it's, it's going to lead to work.
Yeah.
You know, we don't know when we'll get the funding, but we'll have the plan.
I think that, exactly. All right.
Thank you, Ben.
Good, thank you, Bill. Any questions? Questions, Bill? Okay, uh, Lester House. Um, Missy, Doug?
Well, I guess the big news right now is the plaster work is underway in the front parlor. Um, the gentleman, um, John's brother Patrick arrived on Thursday to, um, start the prep work and I went over to help them, um, Thursday afternoon and all day Friday, so. Um, they were supposed to come today. Unfortunately, they decided to take Easter off, which good for them. Um, and so they had to show up to another job site, so they're hoping to be back into the Lester House tomorrow. Um, Rebecca let me know today that we are having issues with both mowers. Um, so we're probably going to need to have somebody take a look at those, um, probably sooner rather than later, um, issues with both the push mower and, and the riding mower. Um.
We just had surf.
Right. And I know I'd spoken with Corey last week and he said that he did a small test run and everything appeared to be doing fine, so I'm not sure exactly what, what happened between then and now, so. Um, and then the push mower, um, Rebecca sent me some pictures. I think it's because it's in the open barn and maybe not covered during the winter, it's, it's seen better days, so. I don't know if it's worth, worth repairing or whether we need to look at, um, buying a new mower, push mower for, for the Lester House or not.
Those are probably not worth putting a lot of money into, it's been my, my, my experience. Of course, the price of those push mowers, you used to be able to, you know, for two hundred, two fifty, you could get a halfway decent one, but that's not the case in a lager, so.
Right.
If I can have, uh, uh, contact Todd about both problems and, uh, he can get over there to, uh, to check both of them out. And he can give us an opinion on repairing the push mower and if it's significant, we probably want to, you know, bite the bullet and get a, get a, a new one. I'll take that action.
Those are the two things right now.
Okay, I would like to say that on the plastering and the prep work, Missy has done an outstanding job. She's, she's been, uh, ace helper to the, uh, the people that we hired. I think we spent all day Friday there working, working on it and getting, getting the, the room prepped, which is where, you know, a lot of the work is actually for this, for this stuff. So thank you, Missy.
No problem.
Very much appreciated.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, I think those are the two key things for now.
One, one, I just, just one que- question for the Fourth of July event. The committee, is there another meeting scheduled or?
Yeah, I'm, no, I missed, I should have had a meeting last week and, um, it, it totally slipped my brain, so I will get something on the calendar, probably towards the end of the, um, maybe next week.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks. All right, no questions. Anything else, Rebecca?
Rebecca, you're on mute.
I think we're all set. I mean, besides, we're done with Orkin. That's the other big news.
Oh, yeah, forgot about that.
You're, you're turned off, but, uh, the, the question, um, was we, those outside traps seem, seem to be working pretty well as I understand it. And it's, is it something we want to continue or?
So. So I did talk to Rebecca about that, um, was it Saturday, Friday? I don't remember. Last week I was there. Um, and Holdages actually sells the outdoor traps as well as the bait. So I think maybe we move to that for the outdoor maintenance rather than contracting with a, with another vendor.
Okay, and they're, they have lots on them?
Yes.
Of it, you know. Kids or other people who shouldn't, can't get into them.
Right. I'll, I'll say I'll double check, but I think, I think we should be good to go from that perspective.
Okay, all right, good. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, research, Lance?
Sure, um, well, Missy and Doug and I, sorry, have been talking some more about, um, historic science and, and Missy already mentioned the, uh, the, the, the sawmill, talking to Alan about the sawmill. And what we're coming down to, I think, is that the idea that, uh, we should have small signs. And what, what we're coming down to, I think, is that the idea that, uh, we should have small signs in the, the nice. Hand painted signs that Roland Foster can do. Uh, one of those for the sawmill and one of those for the Gales Ferry Community Center. And then for the sawmill, if, if a larger sign is needed, that has, you know, the hours, uh, might, you know, longer information than on a simple. Hand painted sign, you know, we, we may have to go with a different vendor and maybe with vinyl letters rather than hand painted. You know, we've used, uh, Tony Civili's firm has done some signs like that for us in, uh, in the past. So that's where we're heading. I suppose one. Question, uh, for Vin is, what is the, what is the date that we need to spend? That two hundred dollars, Vin, that you've budgeted for signage for Roland Foster and his.
We could probably spend it, the, the. Beginning of June was for per, new purchase orders. Not gonna process any new purchase orders after about the first week in June. But in terms of existing purchase orders. And the work to be satisfied, those can actually flop into. At least July.
Okay.
July.
That's, that's good to know.
First, what's it, like, the first week in August in the past is when they kind of close, close the books down. Other, there's some, some, uh, you know, little bit of time there. I, I was thinking, uh, if. We can't get something done within that time, your, your notion of paying. Paying to get a, getting a credit, I, I think that, that's a possibility. He'd have to, he would have to give us an invoice. Basically, invoice would be for, um. Uh, what, what do they, they call them? That, it would be for a credit, it'd be an invoice for. Two hundred dollar signs. That we can, he, or whoever we give, give. That the, uh, give it to, could then cash, give it to him, get a sign. But if you can get it done be- before. You know, July, the end of July, I think that's probably the cleanest way to, to handle it, if, if that's possible.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll work on it. Do you have anything else to add, Missy, about the, the sawmill or?
No, I, I know, I know we already have the text for what it says on the Gales Ferry Community Center, so I can either, Bill, I don't know if you know what the sign says on the. On the sawmill, or I can reach out to Alan to see if he can snap me a picture or.
Let me see, let me look, Missy, I might be able to, I think it might even be on the website. Let me see if it is.
Okay.
Just verify.
Perfect.
So that, that, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Center School? Ten, three?
Yeah, well, there's, um. I mean, it has some paint that's fallen off over the winter more than I. But it needs maybe power washing and a little sprucing up, I don't know. Five hundred dollars, we could make that work, or some point maybe get a little more and kind of. Pay a little bit, there's a little bit of soffit damage on one side. Uh, there's a few things that could be done, if there's a little bit of money to use, we could arrange for somebody to come and give us a price and. Pick some of that stuff before it gets any worse. Um, it was only a little bit last year, I think a lot more has fallen off over the winter.
Yeah.
And it's probably.
It doesn't get better.
Yes. And there's that one edge of the roof, uh, along the soffit where it's, has been raised up. Now it seems to have some, a little bit of rotten, uh. Soften along here that the, uh, shingles sit on. So that needs to be looked at as well, I think, at some point. But that's, um. You know, we mentioned we had the five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think we deflected five, five hundred.
So if you're still happy with what, um. Terry Moran does.
Yeah.
And I could tell him, show him, this is what we have, this is what we need to get done and try to make that work for that.
That, that.
You know? He's pretty good with that stuff.
I think you have a, a good relationship with, with Harry that, that, uh.
Well, he's.
That might make the, because, um. I mean, he came in and, and, uh. There was some windows to repair and so forth, and then he provided estimates to do different rooms in the house. But then he never finished the, the wi- the window, okay? He kind of left us home, home in the back. He never gave us an invoice and. You know, okay, so I, I just, I just thought maybe. He wasn't that interested or, uh, maybe he was thinking. He was there for a multi thousand dollar. Job. You know, to do the interior, uh, rooms in interior. You know, whereas what we ended up giving him was just some, you know, window repair and so forth or.
Which might be okay too. I mean, as far as, you know, I don't think he wants to take on the world. I think he likes repairs and he can see the end of.
But no, he, I mean, uh.
I mean, I don't know who else really.
He did a good job on the school, I thought, the, uh, the dome.
Oh, sure, yeah. And he repainted the whole gear whole school last year.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a little bit tricky, that, that looked, that looked really good.
Spent a lot more than five hundred dollars, but we got a lot more than.
Yeah.
You know?
So, yeah, that's fine, you wanna.
We talked to him about it, walk around it with him.
Yeah, he's on the, he's on the, the books in town too, uh, so we can get, you know, get him a purchase order with no, no problem.
So I could talk to him about that.
Yeah.
I think it needs something.
All right.
It's getting all.
We have to get that purchase order out before, well, like the first week in June. But they won't, they won't process any after that, so. Okay.
Other than that, I think it's fine.
All right, thank, thank, um. So, anything on social media? Now.
No, I, I've been a little slack on that, so now, not, no updates tonight.
Nice. Uh, one, one, one thing, which is not on the agenda with kind of all business, but, um. Was wondering about the, that potential Boy Scout project with the heirloom apple trees. Has, has.
Was Brandon Gary, Brandon Graver was here last meeting, is that, I missed.
Yeah, that was last week.
Right, the last month, right.
He came in and gave a, a present to, you know, explained what he was doing, but he was going to go back on the question of maintenance. The question was raised.
Oh, about.
Who's gonna maintain them? Do they have to be sprayed? Didn't say, and, you know, we didn't talk that, but he talked pruning. He says, if you want apples, you're gonna have to prune them every, and there's a technique to do that, and so it's like, who's gonna do that?
Yeah, I, I don't think the project, the, the Boy Scouts aren't, aren't gonna be.
I, I think he, he was gonna contact. Four H or some of the high school agricultural groups. Or, I think, to see if one of them might, might be interested to pick it up. But I think the ball was kind of in his part to get back to us, but that wasn't the.
That's the idea. With a plan like what, because otherwise you put in trees and they make a big mess.
Yeah.
Right, they're dropping not apples, but it's just.
Yeah, they're dropping, yeah, and the thing is you have, as we found out in our house with our apple trees and our. Carrot trees that you have to prune them, so you just get out. New produce, you can't get to it.
Hey, guys, my memory is that, um, we, we raised that issue, um, and so it was going to be part of their planning. Um, for what, how, how, um, the potential heirloom apple orchard would be maintained. And who they could, um, form a partnership with to take care of that, whether it was. Um, someone at the high school or four H club or whatever, so I, I believe that's part of the planning they're doing.
All right, yeah, thanks.
So it's, it's still. Alive, as far as we, we know, I mean, they're still, they're still working on it?
They're trying to get the bugs out of there, so.
Okay.
I will say the idea is wonderful. Uh, the scout involved with this one. Is getting up on his age requirement. Um, so listen, I don't know, Ken, it's Reese. Yeah, so it's Chris's son.
Yeah.
Um, now Reese had a, he had another project in mind before and, and he got real busy with school, so. I'm hopeful they can make this work, but, um, I, I told his dad, I said, Reese should be picking an easier project. Right, or he's gonna.
Senior as well, right?
He's a senior, yeah, but he turns eighteen in the summer, so he has time. He can do it. But the Boy Scouts are pretty particular, like you, and it, you have to be all done, not just the project, but all the paperwork at the end. And if you don't do it by your eighteenth birthday.
Order review.
Done, you, you know, so I'm, I'm not suggesting it, it won't happen. It may be something that the scout, this becomes a, one that several of them do. Right, so we can start a process and, and so, um, it's an awesome idea. I just think it's an awful lot.
I. I think it's a great idea, but, um.
What was it, five years?
Yeah, what they wanted to do is go to, um, many of the local properties where apple trees exist. And graft from them and plant new trees, which would be, you know. Would be based off of trees that are in the area, so fit, historic families that have Alan, for example, right when, you know.
Okay.
And they had, they had a couple names in mind of families they thought would be willing to allow them to plant, yeah, over, exactly.
I think the trees he was, the time period he was talking about was between World War One and World War Two.
Yeah.
That's sort of the trees that were.
Yeah.
Harvested, you back, back in that, that time for you.
Is there a?
And I think he said, you know. You go out in the woods around some of these, uh, these farms, and you find. Some remains of what used to be an apple.
Oh, yeah, we know. They're covered in bittersweet.
What isn't?
Right.
Really ambitious project, but, all right.
You know, I would say this, Vin, even if for whatever, you know, it, it may or may not occur, it could be something. That at the Nathan Lester House, you know, so we, we could do something similar. Obviously, if the Boy Scouts have it, is, uh, uh, they, they can run with it, but this is something that we could do as well. I just think it takes, if you're not gonna maintain the trees, that's. You know, I think it's great planting a tree, right? It's kind of like a John Appleson story, like, you know, and the best time to plant a tree is yesterday. The next best time is today, and so, you know.
Yeah.
We're, I don't re- recall where they intend to do it. I know they're talking about the town green as they were thinking a bit. Did they say where? Where they would plant.
They were, they were talking about Sawmill Park.
Okay.
As one possibility. Lester House was, was another possibility. I think those were the two they mentioned.
Okay, that sounds right.
And besides leaving it, trees to the owners of the property where they got the originals from, they wanted.
Sure, right, yeah.
Okay, um. So I have, is there any, any other? Over new business? Before the commission? Okay, you're, you're, you know, um. Motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
They'll make some motion.
Yeah, exactly.
Second. Call in favor for adjournment? Aye, aye.
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 Opposed? No, okay, we, we are.
Real quick, who seconded?
They did.
They did, alright, thanks.
And Missy, I also sent you a photo and email of the sawmill, um, sign. It just says, you know, ledgered up down sawmill, a historic property. There's.
I read it back to you already.
Way ahead of me.
She's quick.
She is. Oh, the sign on the building itself. I'll have to double check, sorry about that.
The guy we, we, we hired to do the plaster, plastering.
In the Lester House?
John Marsh.
Oh, the best.
I think he's pretty good.
He's been doing it forever.
Yeah, exactly.
His dad's been doing it forever.
He's just getting, finishing up, uh, work on the Dennison House.
Oh, nice.
Been working there for the last few weeks. And it's his, his brother, Patrick, works with him, but Patrick does the prep work. Pretty much. And, uh, charged by the hour. And Patrick, I think, is thirty-five an hour. And, uh. He's sixty-five, sixty-five an hour.
The father or the brother? The father.
Well, these are the two sons.
Our two sons are doing it.
These are the sons, yeah, yeah, I don't know that the fathers.
It's still doing it.
He's gotta be a law, I've gotten the law.
It's gotta be.
But hopefully, you talk to the, the boys have it.
Yes, all about having your hands over your head forever.
Yeah.
No, they're good, they, they create trim, they, they go around corners there, it's amazing what they do. Looks good.
I'm, I'm, I'm signing off, night all.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks, Missy.
Thanks, everybody.
Exactly, have a good, have a good night.
Couple pictures you can look at.
Oh, my gosh.
Look to the barn you built last year.
Did, did he do all?
Yeah, he cut the trees down, he, uh, cut the beams. The, um.
Ken, that is awesome.
You're gonna take in the, you, you have.
That's substantial too.
Oh, yes. Let's be big, they're cutting the doors, making doors to go in the front.
For twenty years, thirty years.
I'll show you, uh, that's what it looks like now, the other.
Very, very good friend of mine, oh, he's doing rock.
He is.
Her second marriage. It's a wonder, you know, because I mean, what I remember, it's just a wonderful.
But though she got old, she died, her second husband ran the place and gam- gamble a fight with her children of the estate.
He makes all the scar joints in the.
And it's like, it's, it's only.
Joints there and.
Things like this.
Who does that all?
Oh, yeah, that's all right, yeah. Makes you forget.
When she got.
Well, your border borders, I mean, okay. Um, the guy who earns time, doesn't like it, he still wants to drill holes.
Isn't it?
That was your hole, that you can't, now, even with the mortars, you gotta clean it up. Because the mortars is a chainsaw that you set up and it goes down there.
Care of it.
But it has round edges, so you just kind of. What you can do of it, there's no time.
The chances are, are all hot now.
Yeah, that's, I know, it's, we look at that, whoever owns the property. Yeah, it says, must be disassembled and moved. Which means it probably be, it's probably been sold to the subdivision.
This town that.
Probably, yeah. And we're trying to save them like.
Well, at least if they can save the house, that's.
I don't know if we should have told you. Sure. Doing tile work now, and I don't know if you knew this, he works for, like, granite?
Yeah, he works for us since.
But what I understand, what I understand, he becomes something of like, their guy, and that's the grain of the backsplash, it's like. So not, I mean, installing is one thing, but literally, like, he's really good at, like, figuring out which two pieces of granite are showing up so that it looks.
Match.
Yeah, I like.
Yeah, he is.
They don't call it seventy dollar.
And then the automotive.
Piece of board for the Coast Guard Museum.
That's right.
That's the before they got to the.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, it's been, it was originally a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's hundred fifty thousand.
Queen King post on there, but you have a queen.
They've been out doing this thing.
And they attached the other bar to that when they were done.
And they've done nothing really to promote here.
I mean, that.
Only, only thing you ever hear about.
Uh, he has, well, Tyler's buddy.
Yep, but they reached out.
Tyler's a good kid. And then Dan, uh, Dan Donovan, if you remember Dan Donovan, he's a legend, uh.
Okay.
Listen, Sammy was the boy.
Museum.
He worked with me now.
Yeah.
Uh, when he's out in Silas.
People went there to see.
Just a great thing for both of them.
This is really. Oh, my gosh.
They're learning stuff, they're verbal a little, but they're realizing, you know, they know this stuff.
This is one slight problem.
You're gonna work with me this summer, but he's not.
I may, I bet he's a hard one.
Yeah, well, you gotta keep going, yeah. You know, they lose, they sometimes lose steam, right? You know, you gotta keep the energy going.
Uh, it was interesting, he had a fortune cookie, we had Chinese.
Working class.
Um, last night.
I mean, they're not a big boy, they're not the twentieth century.
As long as you don't try anything new.
You know, that.
Stay in range of. Because he never wanted to do anything new, I'm like, that's perfect for you. So all you can do, everything you've ever done in my work, that's life.
So, yeah, he's There's always something where you have different things going. Alright, I said, you know, we think it'll work well, yeah.
I mean, and they're gonna have a grid of water, garage, garage, toilet. You go down Take a lift by the old Savage Bank building, go into the parking garage. Park your car, crossover on your crossover, covered walkway, air conditioned walkway, over to the museum. When you get out
It's not simple Yeah, as far as
It doesn't
No one, you know, you gotta know where to put the the cross braces.
On September
And you know, and when you cut things on a tree, and then you sit for a while, and she caught on the green. When that eighth is
They burn the city to the ground.
You know, you take it, take it back, because it's not gonna be strong, so So the face twists a little
It's supposed to be used as a sort of a location, same way that um
There's a little paper.
The National Park
Make it a little smaller. Those are the things you learn at
Boston and Where they more or less act like a Take tours. Boston, the only place that the the National Parks actually runs is the um
Best part of the portfolio.
It's Faneuil Hall. Everything, everything else
Get back into a lot of little stuff you've been waiting on. Had around decades years, he's got a lot of different
The thing is, is that
He has a bunch of logs that cut
Put up one of those big Parks that says it shows the various historic sites in the area, you can see.
Right, yeah, okay, there's a telephone pole to take them down.
It never
You get those?
Yeah, I saw them right then. It's a park, and it's like We have a national park, we have two national parks in Connecticut.
Really?
Yeah, he's done a couple of farms, he made one for a friend that gave And now he has a temple for it.
And there's
You know, when you hire some of these guys
The thing is
They'll work, but they'll also do a lot of stuff that you don't have to worry about doing.
The coal There's really nothing, it's gonna be in the And uh, everything else is part of the
So it's another thing, you know, working with scouts He's got a lot of logs All these guys got trees, it means they cut an old cherry tree from their house or black walnut
Yeah, I I I mean
Whatever it might be, and there's only So you don't take it to a mill.
He gets the empty Starbucks. You got the custom house, the only place it's open on a regular, it's open daily is the custom house.
But you have to cut it, dry
That's it.
Stack it, that's that labor.
I don't know if it, I think it's open by someone that may be open. You know, tourist draw, like they think the airport museum, but that's basically My brother and I went to the airport museum back
Thank you. No, no worries, thank you very much.
Hopefully
Yes, and that's a college. A piece like that
And we saw it in the, and when they first, they were in their new building
They know the
Right now
General Woodcraft in the
They got everything that they They got a special man who had a dedicated
Two hundred fifty dollars for four boards.
Now, I mean, the big draw that people are gonna see, wanna see when the Parking museum is gonna be
He's learning.
We get questions from time to time with the Sawmill, where like, you know
They, it's the uh, that water taxi I don't know what
What does it goes, where does it, it goes to They go, they make sure they're gonna go up to
Oh, yeah.
But there isn't
He does You have people that come in there looking for certain things.
Well, across the river to the landing
The other thing I would Facebook Marketplace.
Then we'll go down to Fort Trump.
Really sort of take it over for that stuff, because all the moms are on there all the time, and so um you know, I think he could I'm seeing more and more of the boards that are there.
Not even this way, one Sunday, I, like, so they work over in the one inside at the old Patrick headquarters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not gonna get any These old ash trees are all gonna be dead.
Maybe the parking lot in Fort Trump will stir Across the river and Just out of curiosity, go over to
You know, and I'm not
Yeah.
Because the first people think that, this is important, hey. Any battle fought here?
Yeah.
No, not really. Well, there was here, but they they banned the fort before They got attacked because it wasn't finished.
Then once you get going, but you saw
It's a pretty impressive building, but it doesn't have the same
It just takes a while to build the inventory when you're
Yeah.
Marketing. It doesn't have the same You don't have the
He seems to come up with enough stuff that
I mean, it's like uh
He's gonna be done with this here pretty soon, he's hoping to get away from it just to The lady asked him, you know, how, because you gotta build a land, I got land, maybe just to build some inside, corral some of that. He said, wow, have you got somebody else, you know, I could do something, you know, you know. So she's giving him a chance, but he's he just kind of wants to he does for a while.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
Alright, good night, Jay.
Yeah, good night.
I can't say it anymore.